Matthew, you are, you are voting. Yeah, Patrick's gone. Nathan's not here. We're just waiting to make it official yet, that's all. What?
You're always in the front.
Oh, okay, wait, I don't care, I'll sit on the side, I'll sit out there.
You get to sit in front of the center.
Yeah. Oh, well. Okay, it is six thirty, and we will call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is, the roll call, please.
Meyer.
Here.
Dan Campton.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
Bino.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Holdup.
Here.
And Majewski, Smithback, and Moulzon are out tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is that, well, yeah, okay. Update on the annual Village Appointees, so it's election of Plan Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. We never selected a secretary, it's always Joy.
It's ceremonial.
Oh.
Uh, one, one item to note here, Joy, if you could scroll down, my computer decided to do a complete reboot right now.
Okay.
The, Mr. Meyer was left off of my memo because I was going off of last year's memo, uh, which he was also left off of, and I guess nobody noticed, so sorry, Scott. Um, but he, he's kind of on an off, uh, cycle, so his term is twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four, so that's just not added here on the list.
Okay.
Did point that out to Martin, so we'll correct that next year and make sure we've got everybody on those two main cycles.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then the next item, item number three, is to, um, this is the appointments and the election of the Plan Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Uh, first, we'll open up nominations for the Plan Commission Chairman. Do we have any nominations?
I can nominate Greg Schnelly, second to motion.
Thank you.
Close.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I guess we don't need an election, do we, so, all right, then we'll move on, and thank you again for the, the support, I appreciate that. And then Vice Chair, please, nomination.
I'd like to nominate John Bino.
Second.
Second, I move to close the nominations. It, it's, well, I don't think anybody else is gonna jump in, we're not gonna have a runoff, I don't think, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, do we wanna have a secretary? Who would like to be secretary? Open.
Did we have Patrick last year?
Yeah, we're gonna do that again.
Yeah, move to nominate Patrick Moulzon.
We have a second.
Move to close.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries, we don't normally do it that way that much, so, we'd like to have more discussion. Okay, moving on, thank you very much, everybody, for doing that. Approval amendments of April thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, do we have a motion to approve?
Second move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Nathan, or Matthew, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next item is item number five, which is, uh, public appearances, in this, we have, uh, it's open to anybody in the public. He wants to make a comment whether, regarding it's on the, uh, agenda or not on the agenda. You can approach and discuss this with the Village Plan Commission. We will not necessarily give you any advice, but we will maybe ask you for further admission, or it, uh, questions. Anybody have anything they wanna talk about that's not off, not on the agenda or off the agenda?
We will have two public hearings, so if you're here for either of those, you'll have a separate time to speak on those items.
But we can, they can talk about it all, so, no? No, nobody wants to get in talk, okay, thank you. Moving on then, communication, business, business. We have none. Uh, unfinished business, we have none. New business, um, a public hearing to discuss and consider recommendation of Village Board for a general development plan for La Villette de Bergamont condos, phase two. Applicant is Fleming Development. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, staff reports.
All right, I'll kick us off here, um, we're all pretty familiar with this project, it's come, come through a couple of times, and I think we're finally there, so, um, happy to be presenting this tonight with you all, um, so, this is, we'll get to the site. Twenty-three condos, um, behind existing condo building on a separate parcel, uh, corner of Augusta and Bergamont Drive, um, Bergamont Boulevard. Um, the main concerns here have been stormwater, and that's been the reason that this, um, plan has kind of been held up for a little while. Um, going back and forth with the engineers and, um, Jeff, who's at a conference tonight, uh, but, uh, he's finally comfortable with the plans I included, the full stormwater report, just to show you that it has been accepted, I know that's why the packet's so thick, sorry, Joy. Um, but wanted to just share that information, um, and there have been a couple of revisions of even this plan, um, based on Jeff's comments, so he's comfortable with where things are. This has also been, um, got an approval of our fire department, um, contingent on, you know, one side of the road is gonna be, on-street parking, the other side of the private drive would be, uh, no parking allowed. But, uh, this is really familiar, really similar layout to the Eagle Drive, um, senior duplexes that Lake Stone did, further down Bull, Bergamont Boulevard. So, um, similar layout and kind of density here. Jake Fleming's here tonight, so he can, uh, answer any of your questions, but overall, project's the same, it's geared towards, um, seniors, but I don't think it's necessarily age-restricted.
No.
Um, and then they'd included in a previous packet, I don't think I included it this time, but some of the, um, the concepts for the exterior, I think kind of a craftsman style, a lot of darker, um, colors, which are very popular, uh, currently, so, happy to answer any questions. Um, Jake's here as well, so I think that kind of summarizes it, again, stormwater, um, some of the back-and-forth memos and questions I also included here in the packet. So, some of the stormwater facilities will, of course, be on private property, and Jeff just, um, went through with their engineer to make sure they understood, um, kind of maintenance and construction, and there will be a swale easement along the eastern side of the park, um, to get it tied into the kind of system that goes down to the big Bergamont Pond. So unfortunately, Jeff's not here tonight to answer all the technical questions, but, um, hopefully, we can.
But the understanding is that he's comfortable with where we are now with this.
Yep, yep, I think, uh, this was submitted back in, sometime in March initially, this, this version, and then he spent quite a bit of time going through with detailed comments, a couple pages of comments, and then, um, we've had about two revisions since then.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, sir, your turn.
Yeah, well, I guess I don't really have much more to add, it was gonna be pretty much what Elise just said, so, yeah.
Anybody have any questions at this point?
The question I've got is, can you give us a Cliff Notes version of sort of what has transpired since that last time?
Uh, just mimic what Elise says, um, just our engineers working with the village engineers and, and Jeff, um, reviewing his comments and making revisions, um, just to get him, him comfortable and, and us comfortable with moving forward, so.
The overall plan, um, is about ninety to ninety-five percent of the water will actually be diverted into, um, the storm sewer connections in Bergamont Boulevard and Augusta Drive, there's a pretty significant, um, grade change, obviously, on this site, you can see this is kind of the path, the, the water is going now, naturally wants to go this way, and it's quite a bit lower in the northeast corner than elsewhere, so, there was only so much they could do, um, with, you know, kind of mass grading here to force all the water out to the street, so there is a small amount, again, I think it's about five to ten percent of the, the runoff would go through this, um,
Okay.
small swale, and it would be on public property in our, in the park, kind of along that wooded area.
And currently, the way that the site flows is almost a hundred percent of the site.
Correct.
Right.
So we're reducing the amount of flow. That's what we wanna do, okay, thank you. Public comments, anybody wanna make any comments to this? Okay, I guess we'll have to, yeah, vacate your spot, and all we're asking for is just your name and address, and, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Nudashine, and I live at six oh three Prairie Grass, if you were to look on that map, you'd have to scroll up, a little above it, there's a property line right there, and I'm the next property out from that.
Okay.
Um, so I am obviously here to talk about this, uh, plan tonight, um, as Elise mentioned, um, there's been some significant changes from some of the previous plans, um, and they have created a swale, uh, that will run up to, but I don't think completely up to the, uh, trail that runs through the parks, between the two parks right now. Um, I think there is one picture that kind of shows that easement. Um, my first question that I'd, I'd, uh, ask of the Planning Commission is, um, a clarification, and, you know, um, Elise mentioned this, uh, there's been some back and forth, and there was an inconsistency within the packet. Uh, one part of the packet, page twenty-seven, showed a park swale that was a four-to-one slope, based on Jeff's, uh, comments and, and concerns that, um, the previous original slope was quite steep and hard to maintain. Uh, but later in the packet, it still shows a two-to-one slope, um, directly up to the properties on that east side, so, one clarification I'd like to know is, like, if you vote, what exactly are you voting on, and how do we ensure that, um, just because, frankly, if it's a two-to-one slope, um, my fence gate becomes inoperable for utility workers to try to get in there, and I don't know how us or the village maintain that going forward. Um, the second question I have related to that was another comment that Director Rao had made, was, um, that trees within the park, um, should, mature trees should be avoided, and there was a note from the developers' engineers that they would try to do that, um, both the trees and the root structures, but there was no definition of what a mature tree is, and how they would go about avoiding them, and what they would do with that swale around there. We happen to have a tree that's about sixty-plus feet tall, and two-hundred-year-old oak tree that I'm sure qualifies as mature. Um, it's as close as it could possibly be to our property line without being in it, um, and my concern there is if that tree structure is damaged, but not obviously, it could weaken the tree, and potentially, if it fell, it would cause some significant damage to our house. Um, I'd like to keep the tree because it provides a lot of shade, but I guess I'd just like to have a little more definition about what that would mean, you know, when we talk about saving those mature trees. Um, and then my last comment is, uh, when we first had this neighborhood meeting, uh, about a year and a half ago, there was a discussion around, um, stormwater, as I've come and talked to you about a few times, but also about the tree removal in general. This particular plan, uh, basically removes, it says in there about point-nine acres of trees, it, it pretty much clearcuts the lot, which they would have to do to be able to fit these structures on. Um, but at the time, I had also asked, uh, Directors Cruz and Rao about the trees that were in the park. At the time, there was no plan to cut those trees down, um, but now, obviously, the majority of those will get clearcut, so, um, my question is, from what I can tell from the rest of the plan, it looks like the developer is replacing five trees. Um, I'm wondering if this Planning Commission, especially given that they're gonna have these easements for grading, um, could compel a developer to perhaps plant some trees, maybe along that south, south side of the park, um, where those houses are gonna be very, very close to the park, they'll be the closest ones to the park, and it might create a little bit more of a visual barrier to help with some conflicts of, you know, people trying to walk their dogs ten feet from, um, people's houses. So, uh, I don't know if that's a possibility, but just something I'd like the Planning Commission to consider. Um, and then the last question I had was just a technicality, uh, I did not see a, in the past, there's been reports from Ruger Milky that kind of have had a lot of various items for fixing, I guess, um, and I didn't see the report on this most recent version, nor did it seem like some of the previous items they had mentioned were addressed, so, uh, is that something that comes on after this approval, or is that typically available before approvals are made?
You wanna address it, or want me to?
Um, so, I can take a look, I know Jeff kind of took over most of the stormwater review from Ruger Milky, um, so, most of the comment letter, you know, in this last round has been from him, I think there is a, a memo that I didn't include in the packet, um, but their comments were addressed this time around, so, I think, it's just been, again, it was a March submittal, so, that was just a, an error on my part to not include that memo.
Okay.
If this moves forward to the board, I'll make sure that that's in the board packet as well.
Okay, 'cause I know there was a few things about some of the, making sure some of the tie-ins went the right way to get that water diverted, and it looks exactly the same on what was in the packet this time, so it just wasn't clear that that had been changed.
Quite a bit from, there was a, I think, late December version, there was a February version, there's now this kind of April, May version, so, a lot of the, um, the comments in the last go-around, that were in the last packet, that plan is actually quite different, um, from this one, actually, the December plan, the, like, version one or two is more similar to this one than, than the last, so there was kind of a big shift back to a previous design, so I think that's why, again, a lot of the Ruger Milky comments were addressed, but again, I know Jeff kind of stepped up and said, I wanna make sure we do a really thorough review on stormwater here, so, he took the brunt of that,
um, kind of review, um, responsibility this time around. Okay.
So you're, are you okay with that, Bridgette, are you? Well, no.
Sure, I mean, I, I, there's a few things I'm, I still have concerns with, um, the, the plans as drawn, it's a little hard to tell, they, they really like to route a lot towards that new swale, and
Okay.
that does not go to Bergamont, that pools and goes over into Prairie Grass, so, I guess it would be nice to see what is all going, you know, what's going, which direction, seems like the plans are very focused on the stuff going towards the swale.
Yeah, again, I think 'cause a lot of the other stuff is underground, I really wish Jeff was here tonight, 'cause I'm not a stormwater engineer, so I'm playing one on TV right now, so I'm doing my best.
Doing this, again, I believe it's, we're, we're eliminating ninety percent of the water.
Yeah.
That's presently going, so.
Which is, I do think is, it was really reassuring to hear a number like that, I think the big question is with the allowances the developer is asking for, they're actually developing even more than standard on the lot, they're asking for fifty percent surface, um, development, so a ninety percent reduction is great, but we're likely gonna have a lot more stormwater because that is gonna go from, you know, completely pervious to fifty percent impervious.
Impervious, that will be diverted through stormwater, it would not be cross, through it, diverted through a swale or anything, that would be typically diverted through uh, stormwater management type stuff, grates, stormwater pipes, et cetera, so, any impervious surface would be handled that way as opposed to surface runoff.
And that was just where my questions were, because last time, the tie-ins were kind of shooting it out this direction,
Okay.
through those sewers, and some of the comments from Ruger Milky were that they needed to tie the other direction, and that's the part that I just didn't see.
Yeah, and I think that's where, again, I've been kind of relying on Jeff, who, you know, is a professional engineer, to, to do the modeling and, and look at their report and everything, but again, I think some of those big changes have been changes to get the water to flow and connect into those, so we're still, I'm sure that's something he looked at, I'm trying to find right now in my email, the, the memo, so if I can pull it up, and not have to scroll through all my emails, I will, and, but yeah, we'll make sure, again, if this moves forward to the board, it would be the May twenty-second
Okay.
meeting, um, and we'll make sure that that's included in that packet.
And even though he's not here, I do wanna say a, a lot, uh, you know, just a thanks, 'cause I do know that he's worked really hard on this, and I do appreciate.
Thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate that. Thanks very much, Bridgette, appreciate it, anybody else that speaks?
Hi, Mark Coltman, nine forty-one Augusta Drive, uh, I live in Lot One in Bergamont, which is, uh, the house that is adjacent on the east side of the property, so, I have, uh, similar questions to, uh, the previous speaker regarding the mature trees, so I'm not gonna, uh, duplicate that, but, um, while her perspective was maybe more from, on, on her side, on the, on the north side, closest to, uh, the Bergamont Park, mine is more, uh, related to, from Augusta Drive all the way down, uh, as you get to, as you get to the park. Um, it looks like there was a utility easement in the latest rendition that was, that I believe was just added in, so I'm assuming then that that means, um, that that easement runs the entire, uh, east side of, of the lot, which then I'm assuming all the trees there would be clearcut. So I just, again, similar to the other, similar to the other speaker, just wanting to see if there's any possible way to keep that there's, that we can keep any of the mature trees, uh, that are there, so, so that they don't get cut down, I'm assuming that's not gonna be the case because it's only a six-foot easement. But we have a prob, I don't know how old the tree is, but it's a very, very old, mature oak tree that actually sits right in the back corner, um, as you get close of our lot, but that's, it's actually in our property, and I don't know anything about easement, so I don't know if, if that is gonna be allowed to stay, if a utility easement that comes in there is going to, they have the potential to come in and cut down trees or landscaping or thing, that, things that are on our property that we've put in, or not, um, part of that's just, I, I just don't know anything about that, just to know if that's anything that we need to be concerned about.
Is easement on your property?
No.
So.
I don't believe so, according, according to, um, the new modifications, I believe it's gonna be on the, on the.
On the new prop, or.
On the new, the new.
Development.
The development, correct, correct, yeah.
If it's, if the easement is not on your property, and the tree is not, is, is on your property,
Okay.
they can't touch it.
Okay, and would there be any, um, stipulations regarding for not only my property, but those that align and, and abut right next to it, um, when we, when the development goes through and after the grading is done, if we wanna put up any sort of landscaping or, or privacy, is there gonna be any stipulations in terms of what we can do, or how close to our, our lot line that we can go in order to make sure that there's access to the easement for the utility companies on their end?
You don't have to provide any, any access to the easement,
Okay.
if, if the easement does not go through your property.
Okay.
Yep, it would just all be, if any, you know, TDS or line or whatever, they'd be coming through the condo development to access that easement, so, you're more than welcome, as always, to put up any landscaping, um, on your property.
As long as within, you know, the requirements of the village, you know, fences, whatever you're gonna put up, but yeah.
Okay, and then the, uh, the last question that I have is, uh, from a few meetings ago, I think it was the January meeting, there was, uh, there was a comment about, or a question as to whether or not the exterior, uh, building materials of the new condos would match the aesthetics and the architectural, um, requirements for the Bergamont area, and it was, from my recollection, it wa, it was a question that came up. And it was, from my recollection, it was a question that came up that from the, from the commi, commission to say would like to have that, make sure that it matches the neighborhood in terms of everything else that's going on. I don't recall seeing anything changing in, in the last four months on that. So I think it still looks like it's vinyl siding, but, but from, from the rest of the neighborhood, which is all stucco and smart siding and, and things like that, I don't know if that was going to be addressed prior to going through for approval.
Yeah, it's still planned for vinyl siding right now. And, you know, even the houses down Bergamot Boulevard, like Eagle Trace, those are all vinyl siding. A lot of them are vinyl siding as well.
Yeah, when we get to the, yeah.
We do exterior stone, we do nice accents, but yeah, I mean, shakes on the front elevations. But yeah, it's the, you know, just vinyl siding.
So the, so the plans, I guess for the color structure and the plans and everything like that, that's in the current packet, that's currently what you're planning on going with right now?
Yeah.
Okay. I still think that's a little bit different, because I think that was part of the original January packet, too. And if, if I recall correctly, and I could be wrong, but if I recall correctly, I thought it was, the request was to go back and make some modifications to that to fit more of the southern side of the Bergamot, so.
Yeah, we can definitely discuss that when we get to the S I P, that's the site plan level. But yeah, I, I may have actually not included that exterior sheet in this packet.
Yep.
I don't think anything's changed, but I'll get the one from the January meeting pulled up as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We got, Judy's going to come and talk now. Well, I know that.
Are we going to get there or not? Judy Knutson, I'm at one zero zero four Finn Castle Street. I'm right across the street from the project, so their driveway is going to match up to my driveway, maybe five feet off?
Yeah.
Roughly, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure that's, you know, that it all works out well that way. And by having the four spots, so that we don't have parking on Bergamot, because we have the roundabout, then we have the entrance, and that's why I'm concerned if we're going to have twenty-seven and a half feet on the road, so we can have one side that's going to be parking, okay. And I did talk to the fire chief today, and he did mention that he didn't see, do you have fire hydrants in there?
Yes.
He didn't see them, but you don't have them on the plan?
Not this one.
They should be on the plan.
Yeah, because he didn't know, he didn't see them.
Yeah, and Judy, it's Scott Strasberg at the fire department that typically does all the plan reviews. So I've been working mostly with Scott, not Glenn, so I'm not sure how closely Glenn's looked at all of the plans.
Yeah, because Glenn was looking at it today. The other thing I honestly thought, our village engineer, isn't that Rukert-Milky?
Yes.
They're our consultant.
Yeah, how come we don't have him going through this? Because I was trying to compare from the last thing he wrote out to now.
Yep.
Because, you know, he's protecting the village and us as neighbors and the community. So I just, I guess I'm trying to figure out, because it says it wasn't prepared for this going forward. But I'm hoping that we still get one of those, so we know what's going on.
Yeah, we will, I actually, Bridgette had a similar question, too, about where the pack, the memo was. I actually don't know that I ever received one from Rukert-Milky. But again, the comments were largely kind of stormwater review and how those pipes connected. So that's kind of what Jeff was looking at. I just emailed the, our consultant from Rukert-Milky, though, to see. I think it'll be something that we'll have, if it, again, moves forward, we'll have it by the time the packet goes out for the board.
Okay, well, that's why I'm concerned, how can this be approved without all that information? You know, I'm kind of, or what is the procedure? If you approve it tonight, then do I need to call you guys if things aren't working out, or what's happening? Oh, I would, I would be calling you, Greg, I promise you that.
Yeah, and each, each project's different. Sometimes we, if it's a simple project, we don't have Rukert-Milky involved, and Jeff does the review. This has kind of been a team effort, but again, Jeff's kind of taken on more in this last round of review. But yeah.
But I mean, we got this page, what was it, seven hundred and sixty-six and seven hundred and sixty-seven that addresses some of this from E O R, and I'm going, I don't get it. And who are these people? They're, they represent Fleming. So I'm sitting there going, okay, you know? We need to make sure that the village is represented. And, you know, nothing against Fleming whatsoever, I know him very well, and I, we get along great. But I just, if I'm going to live across the street from it, and I don't plan on moving, I'm retired, so I'm going to be visiting you guys. No, I won't. But I just want to make sure that, you know, if, all the documents here, because, I mean, I spent hours after I got this stuff to figure out what's all going on. So what would be the, I mean, if you approved it tonight, what would be the procedure?
Then it goes from here, it goes to the village board.
Okay, and then who fix, picks up these last things?
So we often have contentencies on a lot of the different things, let's say, final engineer approval, final, you know, fire department approval. There's, sometimes by the time the packet goes out, I haven't heard back from, whether it's the engineering consultant or sometimes the planning consultant, or Jeff, or the fire department, depends on kind of what's out there. So I, if there's things that aren't resolved by the time we get to the village board meeting, it's supposed to be on, we don't put it on the village board meeting, we put it on the next meeting.
So all this stuff has to be done before it goes to the village board?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
After you look at Elise's memo from tonight, she recommended approval with a couple of conditions.
Correct.
That was village engineer and fire department, and those are typical for us to do.
Right, I don't want to step in on that, but yes, like, like you're saying, because that has to all be in there before the village board.
Okay, and that's why when I seen village engineer, I thought, isn't that Rukert-Milky, why, you know?
Right.
So that's what I was, I was asking. But I think, other than that, we got that figured out, and proceed to sign off, I just wanted, and, yeah, so then. We'll just watch to see where the driveway comes out and watch all the commercials.
I'm going to change my telephone number, I know you have it.
I got your telephone number.
I know you do.
Thank you, I appreciate every thing you guys do, you do a wonderful job. And I know Jeff and Elise work hard, too, so thank you, but I just have to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I wish Jeff was here, so he could kind of explain what he's been looking at. But again, I trust him, that he's, I've, I've watched and copied on all the emails going back and forth. So again, I think a lot of the comments that Rukert-Milky had, and again, that was the, the last memo you saw from them, was a totally different plan. This has been updated and revised to address a lot of those concerns.
Yeah, because Rukert-Milky had like forty-five this and this and this and this, so.
Yep, so new plan, that's kind of set aside. We'll look at, you know, what the new information that was presented. And again, Jeff took the lead on that, so his comments have been addressed. And some of those back and forth memos with Deborah were included in the packet.
Okay. Anything else I should be concerned about, guys? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Sir, are you at, yes, come on. Yes, yep, come on up.
Hi Jake, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Mutzey, I live at nine eighty-one Augusta Drive. I represent the thirteen-unit condo building that's adjacent to this property in this new development. And we commissioned the survey that caused the redistribution of the property and how things are opening up. But the one concern that I would like to voice and want to hear a little bit more about has to do more with stormwater drainage towards the south. Currently, the way the property is located, water drains continuously into our parking lot and has caused a collapse of that parking lot. I see a, you have to pardon me, bio-retention? And I don't exactly know what that means. And what kind of stormwater management is going to happen toward the south? Because currently, it has really damaged our parking lot. And so I wanted to hear a little bit more about what that means. Can someone tell me what a bio-retention tube is and how that's going to help?
I'm not a soils engineer or a civil engineer, so I'm winging this a little bit.
Okay.
But simplistically, when we do stormwater plans, there's a couple of things that have to happen. The D N R regulates that any water that's in a development has to go into what is called a detention basin, so that oil and grease can leach off of the water before it gets into the system. That usually happens in a pond, and that's usually a bio-retention pond. And that bio-retention pond can either be dry or wet. And if it's dry or damp, then that pond can either be grass or it could be bio-retention, which usually has like wet-type things that can absorb, that have deep roots. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So a bio-retention plan is basically a pond that allows water to run off and settle in for a while before it either leaches into the ground or if there's an event that allows that water to build up, it usually goes into like an overflow. And then it goes into that overflow and gets into the pipe and out into the system faster. So that's worst-case scenario, that's for like three inches of rain in an hour kind of thing.
Yep.
We've got, looking at the plan, I was just looking at that after somebody asked about it. We've got, there's a couple of ponds in this development. One is on the south, two are on the south, and then there's another one in the northeast, it looks like. So they're trying to mitigate how much of that water gets out of the system, out of that development, fast.
Yes.
By allowing ponds to allow water to accumulate in them before it gets out. I don't know if I'm doing a good job of explaining it, but it's sort of.
Sort of.
It sort of takes the water that's on the hard surfaces, it goes into the ponds. What can go into the soil from those ponds will go into the soil, what can't will go into the overflow, go into a pipe, and then out into the.
So essentially, we're saturating the soil in that general area.
In a sense, yes.
And so we're increasing the risk of potential.
In a concentrated area, in a concentrated.
In a concentrated area. So we're increasing the saturation of potential water accumulation exactly where it currently has collapsed our driveway.
That I don't have an answer for you, ma'am, but I do know that the water probably in that pond, at the bottom of that pond, is lower than at your parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
So that water will saturate the ground below the surface level of what your parking lot is, and therefore really won't have a whole lot of effect on how much it, it deter, or causes any more damage.
Well, we certainly hope that that's the case. What do we do in the meantime, or what do we do if something happens? You know, in other words, property is graded a certain way, this has all been approved, and, you know, there's major structural damage to our parking area, because this water just keeps collapsing the subsoil.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused by what you, he does a fine job for an architect.
Well, I got, I got the general idea, it's just a term that I hadn't heard. And it's exactly located where the water currently has ingress into our parking area, has collapsed it and caused it to decompose.
But when you said it egresses into your properties, it flows across your parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
It flows from the Fleming property into our parking lot, in a steady, steady kind of.
But I hope that, hope that we're going to eliminate that, I hope.
Yeah, we really eliminate that.
So it's rerouting the water to those bio-retention ponds, and then also in those underground pipes that go out to the street.
And that's what I need a clarification about.
Right.
If the bio-retention ponds are going to be places where water is held, you know, it stands to reason that it will just continue saturating, it's like a pond, okay? It's not cement-lined pool.
No, no.
And so the other question I have is, is it safe? You know, for children, families, dogs, cats, I don't know, whatever.
It's not a swimming pool.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, we haven't.
Just what she does, no one needs to have.
Yeah, the liability aspect of having a wet pond, ma'am, is so atrocious that nobody wants to do a wet pond. So it's going to be, it's going to be a detention or a depression in the grass.
A depression in the grass.
They're very not, they're not very deep, too.
We have a lot of them around the village, a lot of them.
Yeah, and I just need to understand what this is. I've got to go back to thirteen homeowners and describe this a little bit about what they can expect in terms of experience.
Where can we, go out on Jefferson Street? Well, the one by your place, yes, Jefferson, but go Jefferson Street. Now, there is some standing water out, but there's other parts of that area that are depressed. When I say depressed, that's the wrong word. A lowered area, and you'll see it's very grassy.
Yes.
That's a bio, a bio.
And so it's grass-covered, is what we're talking about.
Typically in that area, yes, grass-covered.
Or some other deep-rooted plants of some kind.
Yeah, there's sure plants that we have to plant in the bottom of the retention ponds to, you know, let grow.
And that bio-retention pond also has a certain makeup in the soil.
Yes.
So it, it has like layers of certain types of soil based on how fast it allows water to drain through it.
And so it's percolating, so it's concentrating, but then it's not a hazard, correct?
Correct.
So you're not creating a bio-hazard by concentrating and filtering through percolation all of the surface water that can leach out, as you said well before, you know, oils and whatever else might be in it, okay?
That's the normal.
Yeah, normal, okay.
I'm a civil engineer, and you'd do a heck of a job.
We also don't, there's no wells here in terms of where we get our drinking water from, so it's not nearby any wells, but they're designed for those plants to capture any.
Standard water filtration for a municipality is basically a sand filter, in all honesty, so.
Well, I'm just been, you know, I've been there almost eighteen years, and I've watched the water change and shift. And we've had to do considerable remediation in our parking area because of the development above us, and the water coming down has created a lot more water in our parking area, because water has nowhere to go, which is what so many of the neighbors are talking about. And we've been aware of watching this happening off the undeveloped land. And so we're kind of paying attention to how this is being managed with regard to our foundation and parking area.
Well, let's hope that this helps.
Let's hope it does. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? You all folks didn't just come here to sit and watch, so nobody? Okay, we'll move on then. Plant commission, any comments? Questions of the applicant?
It looks like, Elise, there was a comment from the consultant of the engineer that, that had a fairly extensive reply to, it looks like Jeff, to Jeff, directed to Jeff. I think that was most of the comments that may have come up from one of the, her neighborhood people. I think that was a response to those comments and concerns. It's like one of the last two pages.
Yeah. Get through page, two hundred pages here.
So I, I think that a lot of those comments are, are brought forth in this. There is a fire hydrant at the T intersection, it's on the northwest corner, the inside curve of that. I, I just see the one that I could see. I hope that my cryptic explanation for stormwater helps people understand sort of how this sort of works.
It was an excellent comment.
It looked like it is about a four-to-one slope. Candidly, I don't think that there's a whole lot we can do. It's sort of a, we either cut down some trees or we slow the water and stormwater in this development. And I would rather have the stormwater be taken care of, my opinion. I would rather have the stormwater be taken care of and plant some additional trees than, than try to save a couple of trees and still have water problems. So I, I think that overall, they have done what they have asked us to do in, at this level. And I think it's a good plan to move forward.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this point. Discussion, move on to discussion, a possible recommendation to village board to, for the general development plan. Comments? We've seen this a lot, this particular development, and gone through a lot of different variations of it.
I would weigh in that I think it's important to, to try to save as much of the tree growth that is there. Those kinds of trees take a long time to be there, and a lot of people pay a lot of money to get those to grow and they're good for the environment and all those things, that we need to pay attention to it.
Okay, I would agree with you, Larry, that, but again, going back to John's comments, if we have to sacrifice a tree or two or something to give a, do a better job of, of controlling the water and the flow off of this property, and then come back and plant more trees. I know you and I won't be around to see them get real mature, but who knows?
I do know that the large oak trees are pretty sensitive to getting too close to them with excavation.
They are, you really have to essentially stay outside the drip edge. So that's, that's a concern, yeah. Anybody else? Have to have discussion, recommendation village board, do we have a recommendation to village board?
Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve the submitted plan contingent upon staff final approval, including Village Engineer and the Fire Department, and a suggestion to maintain as many mature trees as possible. The definition of mature to be determined.
Well, I think, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I think everybody understands it pretty well, well, instead. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item eight B, which is review and consider approval of the S I P plan for the La, I'm gonna try this, La Villette de Bergamot condominiums phase two. And again, we have, Elise has given us recommendations for approval on this stuff. So, let's, do you have a motion to that effect?
So, move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Matthew. Any discussion?
Do we have any comments about, um, I think it was brought up about having materials match what was in the other properties?
This is the time to address it.
I guess one thing to clarify, I know there's a lot of phases of Bergamot and a lot of different HOA rules. So, I'm not sure if we said, you know, does it refer to the requirements for Augusta Drive? Or, you know, which area of Bergamot would we be referring to? And those are HOA rules that, um, the village doesn't enforce. So, as long as they meet our, you know, building code and zoning code and everything, anything that's above and beyond that, you know, you have to have this type of mailbox, or you can't have a basketball hoop, or you have to have this type of fencing. Those are privately managed, maintained, so, um. Anyway, just to throw that out there, I'm also seeing if I can pull up, um, the exterior sheet.
Well, as the developer, I would hope and would think that you'd wanna somewhat fit in with the rest of the community.
Yeah, definitely.
Regard, you know, but again, but regarding the, the, the other items, like, like you said, basketball hoops, that type of stuff, that's, we can't say anything about that.
Right, right.
Is it, is it Jake?
Yeah.
Jake, can you, um, on a, can you give us sort of a layout again? And again, I apologize, I'm not familiar with the phases of Bergamot. I'm not. Um, can you give us a, a, an explanation of where the phases are and sort of what the covenants are and the differences between them in this area?
Well, I mean, I've had nothing to do with creating those. I know the original develop, excuse me, development. You know, it was, you know, on Inverness and Rinpoche and down in there, you know, it was no vinyl siding. On the front elevation, you had to have stone or stucco, um, you know. And it, for the most part, that carried through to a, a few of the phases, it's changed a little bit. Um, you know, like in the new, in the new phase, it just opened up, um, along eighteen and back in there. Like, I, I think in the first phase, you couldn't have horizontal, um, even like LP siding on the front elevation. But now they are allowing that. So, it has kind of varied. And I don't know, I know fiduciary is in, in control of it now, and I don't know how much they, you know, enforce that, I guess, um.
I think they're, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I haven't been involved in those, those developments.
Yeah, I think they're, like, fiduciary has architectural review committees for each, I mean, they kind of oversee it, I believe. But for each neighborhood, maybe some of these neighbors, we'll speak to how that works. Um, I know also some of the, some of the sections of Bergamot have required, um, stucco. And I think that's been found to not kind of withstand Wisconsin weather as well. So, there's been some updates to future phases to, to not have that requirement. Um. Yeah, that's just what I've gathered.
But none of those, none of those items, none of that has to do with this property? I can't imagine, because it's a separate, it's separate ownership, separate property.
Yeah, it doesn't apply to this property, just talking about kind of what's in the area, um, and, and trying to match. Sounds like vinyl siding is the, the main concern.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, and it, it helps with the price point, um, you know. I grew up in this community. We, I, my dad still lives here. We're, we're, we want to build something that is cohesive and, and looks nice and, and fits, so, um, we're all on board for that.
All right. So, we still have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to review and consider recommendation of the Village Board. The plat, the condominium plat for La, I'm gonna get this right, something, La Villette de Bergamot condominiums phase two. Again, Elise, your comment to that, everything is?
Yeah, actually, um, now that we're talking about this more, so the condo plat was actually what Rukert Milkie was kind of tasked with, the comment, writing that comment letter on. And again, I don't think I've received that, but they, the condo plat hasn't changed really much.
No.
There's been a couple of, um, like, the road has gotten, I think, a little bit more wider. The parking was added, um, some of the setbacks have moved around. So, they have their land surveying team look at all the CSMs, all the plats. So, I think that's the comment letter that I haven't received, but I don't anticipate any groundbreaking findings. Again, I will make sure that I have that and all their comments are addressed before I bring that to the Village Board.
You gotta put that back together with your.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon final staff and consultant approvals.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You meant, this will be at the Village Board meeting when?
Uh, hopefully on May twenty-second, assuming we get all these other, uh, loose items wrapped up.
Thanks.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
New Villatal, we should be at one oh one Alpine for that May twenty-second meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, uh, move on to item eight D. It's a public hearing to discuss and consider recommendations of Village Board for a G D P general development plan, two ten, two twenty, Janesville Street. Applicant is Steel Properties. At this time, we'll open the hearings, our hearing. Staff report, please.
So, um, this is a site, um, that Jerry Bonney are, and their family are working on purchasing. I think the closing will be beginning of June. Um, last meeting, we had a CSM to combine the two lots here at two ten and two twenty, Janesville Street. Um, this was formerly K and K Lawn, has been used for, last year, a C and K tool rental. Um, the deals are looking to do in addition to the property to allow, um, some more space for businesses. Uh, they would each have their own rear and front entrance exit, so, um, potential for up to three businesses to be here. Um, they also have proposed to stripe, um, some parking spots. Uh, the reason this is a planned development, obviously, it's an existing building that's being added on to. But, um, in the central business zoning district, it's a downtown zoning district, and it's historic downtown. So, we like to have the buildings right up along the sidewalk and kind of taking up the majority of the site. Obviously, this is a funky site here with just the, right, being here on the corner. We wouldn't necessarily want to have, you know, a building right here on the corner to block the view. But, um, because the building they're proposing is kind of more of that suburban, you know, setback. It's still fairly close to the sidewalk, a lot closer than we would see, um, you know, North Main Street or something. Um, so requires just these special exceptions from the central business district. So, G D P, S I P are gonna be pretty similar here, but I believe the materials you all are planning on using would be similar in color, um, to what exists now, similar materials. Um, and, yeah, I'll let Jerry Bonney add anything else you want about your plans for the site or, um, or just kind of your, your work on this property.
Yep, go ahead, please. Good evening.
Hi. Um, I guess, yeah, we don't have a specific plan or tenant in terms of occupancy at this point. But it's a unique, obviously, a unique site, the way the building is set up. Um, it's an entrance into downtown Oregon, and we saw the addition as an opportunity to, um, to bring more business, hopefully retail, into, uh, into the downtown area. So, um, you know, we worked with, uh, with Jeff Grenier on the plans, and what you have before you is what he came up with. And, um, you know, what, I guess that's, you know, we're open for questions and comments.
I, go ahead. Anyways, somebody have a question or comment? Looks good to me. I don't know what to tell you, it's just, um, Mr. Grenier is obviously very familiar with what the requirements are for the village, so.
Mm-hmm.
Comments from you, Elise, anything? You feel that everything's according to your comments are good?
Yeah, and just call the sound the memo. The only real flexibilities here are just on the setbacks. And then also the building height. Typically, we have two-story buildings or more in the downtown. This would just be a one-story addition, um, but kind of a nice transition into the neighborhood that's, you know, kind of backs up to this site.
So, we're gonna have a, we have to have a public hearing for the rezoning?
Yeah, since it's a G D P.
So, I thought, but that's not tonight, okay.
It is. So, that's, that's eight D.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get down there yet. Well, that's not, it's a general development plan. It's not for, um, rezoning, is it?
It is a rezoning. Well, it's, it's, it is central business right now. The building that's there is, is kind of a non-conforming building, and I don't think there was ever.
All right.
This process done. It also probably, I don't know when the building was built, the existing building. Do you guys know?
Quite a while ago.
Yeah, probably predated our current code, so, just bringing it into, um, the rules that are.
Mobile station.
It's been here a long time.
Yeah.
We had a resident tell us that her father owned it from nineteen fifty to nineteen eighty, so.
Well, I'm guessing the siding's been redone since then, makes it look newer than it is, yeah.
Yes, very much so. Okay, okay. Any other comments you guys have? Nothing?
I don't think so, no.
All right. Any public, uh, comments? Anybody have anything that you want to say? Audience, nothing?
Just for a brief thing.
Sure, like, okay, like, come on up, please, give us your name and address, I appreciate it.
Uh, Michael Doran, I live, uh, across the road, across the street, three nineteen Janesville. I guess I got one really quick question that, um, Elise may know the answer to. There's a monitoring well right on the corner that looks to me to have been oh, part of a groundwater investigation or potentially, uh, groundwater cleanup activity.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not locked. It should have padlock on it, and I don't know if it's been abandoned properly, so, that'd be something.
You know about it, Jerry?
Yes, we looked at that property twenty years ago, and, uh, the D N R put the wells in. I think there's three wells on the property. Uh, I contacted O P four. We submitted our offer, and they guaranteed we meant the wells were abandoned as much as.
Good.
Thank you.
As long as we didn't take a placement, uh, we were good to go.
All right.
Got it.
So, after, afterwards, uh, you wouldn't see the well anymore, I guess. It would be gone, right?
Yeah.
Below grade anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I'm just curious, uh, between the downtown area and this location, there's a lot of opportunity for redevelopment there. And personally, I, I'd be interested in seeing somebody's vision of what that block would look like. There's several properties there. One should be cleaned up and something redeveloped where that is. There's that beautiful old factory building that could be redeveloped in some way. And a vision for what that block will look, look like so that we don't just attack it piecemeal. And maybe in the end result, we're not happy with what we ended up with. So, that's just a comment I have.
All right.
I don't know if this falls into the purview of the village, but in a lot of cases, when you have a downtown area, you can come up with an idea, and then when each site is, uh, is redeveloped, it can be, uh, conforming to that idea. So, that's my, my last comment.
Thank you. Good thought. Anybody else? Okay. We'll close, uh, Public Plan Commission comments. Anybody have anything? Okay, we're gonna close the hearing then. Move on to discussion. Pass recommendation to Village Board for the G D P plan, two ten, two twenty, Janesville Street. Everything's fit, it's, it's all laid out.
It's a quirky property. It's just kind of adding on to something that's existing. It seems.
Making it look better.
Like a reasonable request to be made, so, I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon staff comments.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Can I take a pause here? Elise, is there an opportunity now to kind of speak to the community about that?
Yeah, um, Michael and I actually have been having a lot of phone conversations over the last year, it seems like. But we discussed the same topic on the phone a couple of days ago, too. And we literally mentioned to him our comprehensive plan update. Um, you know, this is also, um, it's kind of on the edge of our old district. Um, so, there, in the past, has been kind of some investment. Right now, it's just more based on facade grants, but some investment from the village to try to revitalize some areas. So, that's always something that can be looked at and updated in the future. Um, it's difficult to kind of have an exact, you know, we don't have what's called a form-based code, which, um, lays out how buildings should look, and more just provides the rules of where builds, well, where buildings can go, how high they can be, um, sometimes, you know, what materials can be used. Um, but especially when there's different property owners, um, it's difficult to necessarily say, you know, this is gonna be, this is gonna be the blue building with the porch, and this is gonna be the red building. And if you buy this, this is what you have to build. Um, part of the review process, you know, through, these areas are not part of our historic downtown, but especially up here, um, there's another commission that we have, Historic Preservation Commission, that makes sure that we kind of preserve the integrity of the downtown. But I don't disagree with you that there's a lot of potential down here. I think, um, there's quite a few property owners in the area that see and have that see, you know, have a vision as well. And I think, um, over time, especially as, you know, there's gonna be a lot of these public buildings changing hands, a lot of reuse of property downtown, when the library moves, Village Hall moves. So, hopefully, a lot of good changes and more activity downtown. So, I think, um, more people and activity investment continues to kind of spur on each other. But, yeah, we've never really developed a plan or a code that has a specific form that we wanted to take. Um, but I, I definitely see a future of a lot of investment in, um, beautification of this corridor. We have our public art program that's, you know, starting up. Those sculptures should get delivered, I think, within the next two or three weeks. So, hopefully, that continues to spur on more, um, again, just investment, reinvestment and activity in our downtown.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to, um, item, uh, eight E. Review and consider, uh, consider approval of the S I P plan for two ten, two twenty, Janesville Street. And again, Elise, you have your comments here.
Comments, yeah.
Detailed out. Everybody can refer to them from.
Yeah, materials.
From dated, uh, April twenty-seventh.
Do you guys feel pretty confident about being able to match the color and the roof type?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, um, the current owners are A D C.
Probably be able, yeah, you'll be.
They'd be happy to help, yeah, great.
You'll be successful.
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Contingent upon final staff approval.
Thank you. Seconds, anybody? Who's gonna second? Second, Mr. Mar. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to item number F, eight F. Review and consider recommendation of Village Board for certified survey map, two hundred and two twenty North Main Street and one twenty-three East Grove Street. Applicant is Gorham and Company, Oregon School District, and the Oregon School District. Anybody here to address that?
Um, I am actually. Our, um, contact from Gorman is not able to join us tonight, but I will catch you up. Um, so, there are a number of lots that Gorman owns, obviously. Um, they have the old school and then the home, former home to the north there, that parking lot. The way that the property lines are drawn, maybe I'll just pull it up here on access stain.
Mm-hmm.
Some interesting things going on here. Um, I think this all started because, um. Some interesting things going on here, I think this all started because Gorman wanted to make some improvements to this property, or change the access or something, and they realized, you know, this parcel here, it's highlighted in green, is actually owned by the Oregon School District, and there's a lot of old alleys and access points. The, so they approached the school about that, and the school district said, we'll be happy to kind of clean this up. If you guys are gonna go through the work of hire a surveyor and do that work, would you be willing to kind of pay for the work to include, and kind of clean up all of our parcel lines? Because you can see there's a number of different parcels with the pool. The school is kind of all divided into several sections. There's some old easements along some of the North Main Street, home parcels, too. So this is just an effort to clean all those up and create now just three lots instead of fifteen. There was one change that was actually caught by, maybe somebody from the school district in the last forty-eight hours. There was a easement that was vacated along one of the North Main Street properties. This doesn't have a, a map along with it, I don't think, but it's some, some change to the backyard up here, not a significant change. I just sent this to Ruker Milkie this morning, as I received it. I don't anticipate any, they didn't have any comments on the first draft of the CSM, so I don't think they'll have any more comments. But again, if you all vote to move this forward to the board, I'll just make sure that Ruker Milkie sees that slight change and has no further concerns.
Wow.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of history back here.
A lot of work been done. My gosh.
But yeah, that's a little of both the elementary schools, I think, on the same parcel now. Yeah, a lot of property corners to go out and set.
Good severe that did this.
Cleaned up a lot of work.
Okay, so, any recommendation of village board for approval of the certified survey map at two-hundred and two-twenty North Main and one-twenty-three East Grove Street?
Make a motion subject to final approval of village staff.
Yep.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Marr. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item G, conceptual review of the site plan for, for a standalone car wash, nine-sixteen Janesville Street, applicant is QuickTrip. I was wondering where the person, what you're spending, you're back in your corner hiding, huh? Okay.
How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Go ahead and take it away.
Awesome. Hello, everyone, I thank you for your time today. Can you hear me?
Yes, we should.
Awesome.
I think so, yeah.
My name is Zach Pagel, I'm a real estate development manager with QuickTrip. We're here today seeking initial feedback on our site plan for a car wash that will replace our current site along Janesville Street. As you know, you've seen our requests come through in the past for the relocation into our new standalone location across the street. At the time we presented that plan, some of the feedback we had here was that the car wash we initially wanted to stick on there was too close to the residential. We took that feedback and were able to pull the car wash off of that building into our current parcel. So that's the site plan you see for your review today. Not changing anything about the ingress or egress and timing on this. We wouldn't construct until our new location is open and operating. Of course, the pumps would be decommissioned, the tanks would be removed. So really think this is going to provide some more appeal to the corner, especially since we'll be moving from twenty-one thousand, or, excuse me, forty thousand square feet of impervious surface currently to twenty-one thousand. So we'll have fifty-five percent landscape area in comparison to the twenty-five percent requirement. Should dress up that corner nicely. We're working with Paul Skidmore on our landscaping plan there. I know Elise has received multiple calls from him, very eager to put together something that's going to look very appealing. So happy to take any questions at this time.
Thanks, Zach, and I'll just scroll through some of the plans they provided, some elevations. I think this would match really nicely, kind of your standard brick materials that would be used on the store, new store across the street here, too. But yeah, excited about the potential, you know, just green space and really kind of softening up that corner, potential for a lot of, you know, landscaping there, and, you know, this will be, I think, a popular attraction in Oregon.
It's like a December.
Yep.
Be a nicer looking building, frankly, yes, it will be.
So any comments or concerns from you guys before they, I think we were planning on hopefully, site plan review, and there'll be a conditional use permit, since it is a drive-through, it's in-vehicle sales and service use. So aiming for the June first meeting, if they give materials back, but any changes you'd like to see? Or questions about egress flow on the site?
I've got a couple. I like the additional parking stalls that you've got here, because I know that we had asked you to have a couple of reduction on, on your property, I think this is a good opportunity to make use of that space for employees. The escape lane that you've got, I'm not convinced that it's exactly successful or useful, especially when you show that you've got a two-car queue in there and it's already being blocked. I'm not convinced that it's, it's gonna work. So I think that if you were to have an escape lane, you would be more successful to have one around the south of the property, rather than have that bypass lane going that direction. The other question, comment I've got is, if you were to come in the northeast curb cut, and you head past the parking stalls, and you want to get to the entry, I'm not sure that that corner right there in that teardrop is tight enough to, or open enough to make that turn. So I would, I would soften that curve a little bit to make that more successful.
Sure.
Other than that, I think that it's a good use of the property and, and it works.
Awesome. I will definitely take that feedback back to our site planning team and see what we can work with.
Do you think there's some setbacks here? I'll have to check with Jeff, too, but the butter factory creek here.
There might be.
So just want to make sure if there is kind of a need for an escape lane if it's on the south side. I think there's enough room here on the site, too, you could probably shift the building to the north and maybe have, yeah, that. So, a little, couple of things to play around with, but.
Or just move that lane further west a little bit, maybe, so that it functions, instead of adding a whole lot more pavement all the way around the south side.
Yeah, something.
Sure, so that like the third vehicle could get through it instead of having it block right there.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
We had a staff call, I think, what, day yesterday? I kind of asked about, well, you know, are you concerned that, what's kind of your average queue for the car wash? Are you concerned that there's any kind of backup on the street, or this is gonna be awful? But it does take about five minutes to go through the car wash, so they were mentioning that typically, wouldn't see ten cars lined up, because that's like an hour wait. So thankfully, there's, you know, good flow through the site, people can park, or they can come back, but it's got good visibility, so you can kind of get a sense of, how long am I gonna be waiting in line? But appreciate that you guys at least showed the, the cars queuing up here, that's helpful just for scale, too, to understand what could be fit back there.
It looks like, I don't know if I understand all the, the equipment designations on here, but it looks like the blow dryers are, you know, well inside the building, too, so I think that helps dampen the noise. I've seen some car washes where they're right at the exit door, and probably emits more noise out of the building that way.
Yep, and the material we'll be using on the doors should help with noise reduction from those dryers as well.
It's not the first one you're doing.
No. But you guys are special to get a standalone one.
Yeah, we are, that's, that's right.
Can hang your hat on that.
You have a grand, grand opening type thing. All right, no, I, I think we've got some good comments, and take it back, and, you know. John has not a lot of experience with, with development, so his comments are good to listen to.
Thank you, guys.
See you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other public appearances, I don't think. Okay, so, what do you do with this? Move on to director of community development report, status of development projects.
Things are developing.
They're developing.
I have one exciting bit of news to share with you guys. It'll be, it was just published in the board packet, but I haven't presented to the board yet, but I did get a call from North Point Development, so they have the property in Oregon Parks, just north of Mulligan's and Journey Above, under contract, to south of Scott's Duplex. But they just heard back from WEDA earlier this week, and they did get their award this year for their project. So they're actually gonna be increasing the project in size just a little bit, from sixty units to seventy units, so that multifamily building will just get a little bit, a little bit bigger, not a significant change. There's twelve townhomes for families, and then a mixed-use building, so you guys had approved kind of a commercial space with the drive-through. So he's actually aiming to come to, I think, our July meeting for the SIP plan on that, and then we'll be working with the board on some, some TIF out there, probably creating a small TIF district to support. This is his workforce development, but it's there's thirty to seventy percent area median income, so even lower range than what Lake Stone's product was, so really excited that that is moving forward. Obviously, Janesville Street's getting, the process of getting kind of torn up, so thanks for your patience. The Habitat project is rocking rolling, if you haven't been down Janesville Street, the whole site is cleared, so. But that's, that's moving along nicely. And then Villatall is moving, next week will be closed, so if you call us or email us, you might not get a response for a few days, but we will be open Monday, May fifteenth. And then future planning commission meetings will be upstairs at Alpine Parkway, so there's elevators and stairs, but there's boardroom and then the community room. We'll certainly let you guys wander around, and we'll have some kind of public open house at some point, we'll, we'll let you know. But we're really excited. Jeff and Candy and the whole team have worked super hard to coordinate all that signage, and it's gonna be a big improvement. We've got three tenants in the space, too, so a lot of room to grow in the future if needed.
Great, great.
Really excited, and yeah, next planning commission dates, June first and then July sixth. Hopefully, that's not a problem with the Fourth of July. I figured that would be better to be after the Fourth of July, with the Fourth being on a Tuesday. Everybody's gonna be in town, more or less, we'll keep, we'll keep it as it is.
At the July sixth meeting?
July sixth is two days after the Fourth, but I figured if people were gonna take a long weekend, they'd probably take it before the Fourth of July versus after, since it's on a Tuesday.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So we're good?
That's all I've got.
Staffing agendas, da-da-da, nothing for future meetings at this point, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second for somebody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I was gonna say second, but you wouldn't let me get to it.